Being recorded. A twelve stand for a claim. Let's lead us to the flag of the United States of America. The Republic of Georgia stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common. Okay, Roko.
Jim Patrick.
Here.
Patrick Rokovich.
Here. I did call her.
Lisa Frost.
Here.
Freddie Gasserson.
Here.
And then Antonio Stuves.
I'm gonna try and call her, my bad.
What's wrong with you?
She had a... She said she was gonna try. She said she was gonna try to be available by phone, so.
Yeah, this is getting way out of hand, this crazy stuff.
You there? Okay, let me try to get the volume up, okay.
You have our speaker?
Yep, she has on speaker. Okay, Debbie, we just did Roko, are you here?
I am here.
All right.
I'm about to down.
All right, visitors' comments?
No.
She's not done with Roko yet.
Yeah, I did.
Oh, did she?
Yeah.
She's calling you?
This is very fun. Three minutes.
Can I start?
Yeah, go ahead.
I'd like to express my sincere condolences to the board and deep sympathy for the decisions made by Peggy and Danke. My heart goes out to the board members.
Yeah, you've done a good job, going through it to get you back on. But we have no control over that, so. Yeah, you don't have a question, do you?
I'm okay.
Don't say anything. All righty. Approval of the agenda. He's a motion to approve the agenda.
Uh, Debbie, was there something you're adding? I didn't have a note on here and I forgot.
Is there something? Yes, the nineteen eighty is in line.
I'm good. I'm looking. Oh, okay, um. So, fireman employee.
Oh, yes.
Uh, new business number three fire calls?
Yeah, that's right.
Okay. All right, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the addition of number three to new business for fire calls.
All right, now I'll second that motion. On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Fail or vote? Okay, approval of the minutes. Meeting minutes of May seventh, twenty twenty. Do you not have a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
All right, you have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, press your request.
I abstain from that because I was...
The charge report. Uh, the balance at the beginning is six thirty twenty twenty, it was one eleven hundred eleven thousand eight thirty seven forty eight. Deposits are twenty four thousand four twenty nine seventy eight. Less accounts payable was thirty eight thousand seven thirty four fifty six. The balance in checking account as of five thirty one was ninety seven thousand five hundred thirty two seventy. Savings account in a balance of four thirty two hundred forty six thousand seventy dollars and seventy five cents. Interest was sixty four twenty one. The balances of five thirty one is two forty six one thirty four ninety six.
I'll comment on that, that's one of the highest it's ever been in board, and who would find out what they stay with?
Appreciate that. Okay.
It's never been that high before because of the past.
Right. Okay, approval of the bills.
We had, um, accounts payable was thirty eight thousand seven thirty four fifty six.
Have a motion to approve the bills?
I'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the bills.
Then I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
I will, I will say this to my people.
All right, I will vote. Correspondents? Number one, letter from Jake Township Supervisor. We got that on the record, right?
Yeah, but you need to make a comment by June eighteenth. The board members will de-comment and send to the supervisors by June eighteenth.
Okay. Number two, letter from William Upperman.
I have a question.
Okay.
On the Jake township, are we all supposed to do a single letter?
Uh, I think they want the opinion of each board member, so individual letters.
Thank you.
So we all should make our individual letters and send them off?
We could all send them together.
Yeah, if you, if you drop it off at the office, we can send it all one envelope.
All in one envelope?
Yeah.
Or I'll drop it off or something.
Okay, I'll make one.
Yep.
Okay, a letter from William Upperman.
Uh, he submitted an incident report that occurred while he was leaving work one day with a former employee that was driving past yelling something down. Um, it is on file.
Hey, a letter from Justin Arnold.
May I mention something on that? If, if you guys feel you're getting harassed or anything out there in the past, it's been, it's always went on. Uh, we all carry a cellphone. And, and I'm not saying anybody's right or anybody's wrong.
Right.
But I carry my camera. If, if, you always have yours.
Yep.
If you see something going on, you're safe with nothing.
Right.
Okay? Pull your cellphone out, turn it on.
Absolutely.
You know, my kids go to races, they could take a whole video. And it's no reason, if you're out there and something goes out and you feel something is harassing you, turn it on.
Right.
That way you bring it back to the board, then we all could say yes.
That is actual evidence.
Then you could say that happened. So, tell your employees.
Yep.
For our employees, you might as well say. To, they all carry one. Use it.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay, that way it covers us and covers you.
Absolutely.
Good idea. Letter from Justin Arnold.
Who is our employee, correct?
Who is current?
Uh, can I read it, you wanna read it? Um, so he's, at the last meeting, we made a motion to change, to make actual hours at the plant from eight to four. Um, he's asking to change them from seven to three due to family scheduling issues. Um, we did put that, we moved it from new business to old business, so we can cover that there. And see if the board wants to change it, keep it, and do whatever.
So, do we need to make a motion or do the vote or?
It's already on old business, so we'll, we'll cover it on number seven.
Anything.
Letter from Popple and Popple. She's on the record, yeah.
Can I ask a question about that? Who, who, did the board vote to send this letter out?
The board did not vote, it was per recommendation of the attorney.
Of our attorney, because it's the water company?
Yeah, to send to the record request.
And what was it about? You know, I mean, we don't know.
Was, oh yeah, you were here.
I wasn't here.
He recommended we ask, we had a person to great bind that former employee Stacy was working at Cowersport. He's, um, any discontractors discussion of what he can and can't do as far as a non-compete. And, uh, the attorney recommended, hey, if you are hearing that he's working somewhere else, you need to confirm it before we take any steps, or if, or if we do take any steps.
So you were just confirming that he worked there?
Yeah.
And what you were doing?
Yes, at this time, that's all.
So it must have been a letterhead from the water company, a letterhead from the attorney?
Standard, standard rec. No request.
Rec. No request to Jake Township Water, forty one.
But it was only, it wasn't approved by the board or anything like that?
There, no.
Because he wants an answer.
That's, yeah, and so the request would have been denied because there is no record of a formal reception to do that.
I did deny it.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're not going to do anything?
No, I already denied his request.
Oh, okay, I mean, all right.
And they, they responded, so it's in the board's hands to make a decision as what to do, if there's anything you want to do, that's...
That falls under... Yeah, that falls under new business.
Under new business employee contact, contracts, that.
Thank you.
That covers that, so.
Okay.
All right, delivery fee.
We sent out seventy one delivery pieces. I thought that was pretty good for the... What was on?
Yeah. And most of them paid, I think.
Well, there's some still on any else.
Maintenance report.
Maintenance report from myself, Justin Arnold, and William Upperman. Um, sixty eight thousand five hundred sixty miles on the F-250. Fifty three thousand ninety six on the F-550 dump truck. Six one calls responded to. Checked our facility and buildings, smogged the grass and weed that was needed. That's been keeping us pretty busy. Greased the universals on the F-250 truck. Plummed the treated side of the well to the utility tub. Worked on drain plumbing at the well, buried storage tank outside of the building. Pulled the motor deck, scraped the decks, sharpened the blades, changed the oil. Replaced bad emergency lights in the generator room. Replaced battery backup light, exit lights in the plant and office. They also have emergency lights on there now. That kind of covers us, if the power goes out and the generator doesn't start or doesn't produce power, we can see, been there, done that, not fun. Spray penetrating oil on the web, they charged hydrant bolts so we can take it apart when we put up Horizon on. Picked up more sheeting to put, uh, to finish the walls at the well. Recharged the air conditioner on the F-250. Picked up rough cut boards to build out framing of the well for the sheeting. Put new control cable and bar on the push mower. Replaced valves on the top of filter drains with quarter turn valves. Repaired two curb box stops. Power washed the pump building, start patching earth with white earth patch. Helped the sewers order to replace, leave the valve out in their pump or their press room. They reinstalled the meter, restored previous dig sites, turned water on at force and leave the parks.
Pretty busy.
Pretty busy.
All righty. Okay, on to old business.
Operation...
I'm sorry, I was waiting for you.
All right, distribution flow was seven million twenty one thousand two hundred twenty one gallons. Total water produced, seven million one hundred seventy nine thousand sixty three. Most of that was from the surface plant with six point four million. The well with seven hundred seven thousand gallons. Completed and submitted DEP reports for the month of April. Completed a lab, bacteria samples submitted to the labs, regular product samples picked up by the lab. Back flushed filters, back flushed in cakes, logged monthly data. Checked water line in the back of the plant. Just pretty much walked the line, looked for anything suspicious. Checked a leak called in by a homeowner on the homeowner's side. They, so was their fix. Checked on and called out higher than normal water use, found a leaking pressure leak valve on hot water heater. Responded to dirty water complaint on Pine Avenue. We flushed some water out of the car to blow off. Tested it, everything is good. Filed the complaint. We are going to open that blow off more frequently. Called out to the plant for high upper durability. The packs, and the wrong was fine, well, I couldn't figure it out here, the pack system blew a fuse. Replaced the fuse, all is normal. The pump starter contact seemed to be loose. May need to replace the pump starter. But it has yet to blow another fuse, so we're good. Four in half days. And doesn't technically need the pump starter, you know what I'm talking about, Brian, in those panels, but...
Contactor?
Yeah, yeah, but if it, it's a good backup, I think, if there is an issue, that would be with the pump. Trip the fuse or it would burn stuff up.
It might not hurt to have, have an electrician come in and clean it.
Yeah.
They can only do that a time or two and gets you a few more years.
I'll, uh, I'll show him, I might not, I have a problem coming in doing that, looking at that for nothing too, so. I'll talk to him, see if he'll look at it.
He's an optician.
He was at Sylvan, yeah. And he told us if we ever need any help with anything, let him know, so. I calibrated the fluid analyzers in the plant. Had Justin and William do their analyst IDCs for method three thirty four, since I was already making standard. They both passed. Spoke to DEP about late reporting of TSC and opera leak for quarter one. There was an issue at the lab, it was not our fault. Samples were collected and sent out at a proper time. I was actually surprised to get a phone call that they were late. So they were sampled in time, they are analyzed in time, but they didn't go to dollar on time, so minor violation. I'll, my hands off. I just have to mark it on the CCR. Contacted DEP regarding an older violation that wasn't closed out. It was a escaped computer crash, wasn't logging data. I sent them a copy of the twenty eighteen CCR where I addressed the issue. The violation has since been closed out. Checked the valve by the west wing church hydrant, it does not shut off the hydrant. We may have to repair the hydrant live. Theoretically, it will still work because it's a dry hydrant, but we have to be careful. So basically, loosen the valve on the bonnet. If it's shooting water, crank it back down. If it doesn't shoot water, it will keep itself shut, so. If you think that's a good thing.
Can work.
Should work, it's, yeah.
Can you backfeed that section? Maybe you need to shut down a whole section? You probably have a couple people out of order.
I'd probably have a first string blown, I would say, yeah. That's, uh, that's on the image. I'd probably have, would I, I'd probably have to do one of those for that whole section downstream, do it then. Well, it is a little...
I'll have to, I'll have to shut it off.
Can't find the valve.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
That's a good reason.
Yeah. That's all I have to operate before.
All righty. Okay, on to old business. CDPG grant. So, the slightly competitive one for FORCE. I've been in contact with Tracy Gerber every week in terms of, I mean, right now we're waiting on when the commissioner's give the go-ahead to bid. With them just going into green last week and finally being able to hold more than twenty five member gatherings. They've kind of been back and forth a little bit on it. Tracy said she shouldn't have worn Monday. So, as long as the board's still good with it, I've had approval before saying, as soon as we're able to, we're gonna bid the project out. So, she says, called me up on Monday and says, we can bid it at the next meeting. We have everything ready. All we need to do is update probably a dozen dates and put the whole package together, but that'll take a day. So, as soon as we have the go-ahead, if it's okay with everybody, we plan on bidding it.
Wonderful.
Um, and then for the smaller entitlement CDPG grant that's due in August. The area of Burndale already qualifies, so we don't need to do any kind of, um, income surveys. Tracy did send me, um, maps of what they technically consider Burndale. It's a fairly large area, I mean, I'm thinking there's probably a hundred and twenty to a hundred and forty residents in it.
Yeah.
So, i- if it already qualifies, what we're planning on doing is submitting four meter, uh, new meters, just like we did in FORCE. Um, the meter and MXUs combined probably two hundred fifty dollars. We're probably gonna be looking at about thirty five thousand dollars to put it in, or, um, is what we're gonna apply for. And then, we're gonna apply for that, but then we'll consider five grand of it as a match on our side. And that will be Patrick and Justin installing it. And that'll, that kind of gives us extra credit points, saying, hey, we're put, we don't need to put a match in. We're putting a match in, we're gonna be installing them anyways. So, Tracy said that would be a good thing to do and, and show good faith on our effort. But those need to be in by, uh, August thirty first.
All right.
But we should have those done pretty quickly.
I sent you the update, you're...
Yes.
Thank you, Brian.
Fosby.
PH small water, so.
What's that?
Oh, yeah, you're right, it's Fosby.
Um, tried reaching out to, I got, um, correspondence with William Gaspari from DEP last week. Uh, he had an additional question on it, even though a month and a half ago, he said everything looked good. He had an additional question on it, responded to that. Um, reached out to him today. And he said that he gave the go-ahead for it, so now it's in Brad Shook's hands. Tried reaching out to him, he didn't get back to me, so. As far as I know, they have no comments, no questions, so it, it should be any day that we're getting it. I'm trying to be a little bit more persistent with that, because it seems like they're dragging their feet.
All right.
Okay, PH small water and sewer grant. Uh, we've been getting a lot of questions back and forth from Kathy Phoenix about that. In our experience, that's normally a good thing. I think so far, what we've been hearing, they're awarding that sometime late July, middle to late July is when we should be hearing anything on if we got any kind of funding for that.
All right.
Okay, defined touchbacks. I'm gonna table that.
I agree, nothing new.
All right. Automatic gate opener, the table, nothing new. Security camera.
Quick update on that, uh, we've been running some of the conduit, I have to get ahold of the guy, uh, at Odell's Lock and Key. Our Chestnut Ridge, same company. About where he wants us to physically drill a hole through the walls, how high he wants them. So, once we get that, amongst some other projects done, um, he'll be able to get in and get things going, so. Kind of a rainy day project, but we've been having those, so, you know.
Okay, plant hours.
All right. Justin mentioned in his, uh, letter about changing his hours from seven to three. In the past, we kind of had a little bit of a flexibility. As lo, and I guess my thing is, as long as work is being done, I would still be okay with that. I would recommend, um, similar to the office hours. Office hours are eight to noon, but Sharon works five hour days, so she has a little flexibility. So I would say, if we do change it, I would recommend plant hours are eight to three. If you come in at seven, obviously, you leave at three. If you come in at eight, you obviously leave at four. That is, that's my recommendation, and that is up to the board. Um, I can keep an eye on, just as much as they can keep an eye on me. If I'm coming in early, make sure things are getting done. There is a morning routine, there is definitely stuff to do. If that's what's being done, I personally don't have a problem with it, but it's up to the board on what they think should be done. So I will, I'll make the motion for that with my recommendation on that, and it's up to you guys, if you, if you agree or disagree.
Sounds like a good plan to me. I'll second that motion.
So...
What was the motive?
Uh, to make actual plant hours from eight AM to three PM. Which would give the, which gives us a window of coming in either an hour early or staying an hour late. But we still have to get eight hours a day.
Well, my question is this. If, if there's a necessary, um, stay over, is that person not gonna be able to stay over that hour?
I would say they could stay over as long, but they would have to get their time and a half.
Well, if they stay a half, then will they, are they willing to do that? Since this is a problem, the seven to three?
Yeah.
And initially, initially I was saying...
Yeah, there's, if I come in at eight, or regardless if I, even if I come in at seven...
And you happen to meet them after three?
Yeah, if we both, even if we both come in at the same time and there's something going on, we need to stay after.
Yeah, we do.
Well, it needs to be...
I guess there would have to be maybe like a mandated overtime policy. If the operator deems it necessary that we have to stay late to work on, to work on something.
Well, how is it now? If you have to stay to something that goes on at like five o'clock?
Yeah, it's just understood if there's an emerg, like if you're already at home and there's an emergency, I call them in.
But say you're in the middle of something?
If I'm in the middle of something at the plant...
And it's three o'clock?
Of high importance at three o'clock.
You're not leaving?
At, yeah, at this point, it's just kind of understood.
Okay.
If it's something important and they get up and leave.
Maybe that needs to be...
That might need to be in writing.
But put it in a letter and sign by the board, or at the chairman, please.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not gonna pick and choose...
Right.
Overtime just for the heck of it. Like, there will be an option overtime, like, we could stay late today, but, I mean, obviously, the board doesn't wanna pay time and a half all the time to do that stuff. But, but I say that is concerned is, is the attitude going to be, well, I clock out at three, I'm not staying. Well...
Is anything like that in the existing contracts?
That's what I know.
Mine maybe.
I'm not.
I'd have to look, but...
I think that you would put it in a letter stating what the board wants from, what, wants to put the eight to three? And then sign by our chairman and give it to them. So I think you should do it.
And then when we, I mean, we...
Do our policies?
Policies, we can...
You could put that in there.
For overtime, overtime may be necessary. I've read that somewhere.
That's only gonna be seven hours, some people will be...
Well, no, he, seven, if he comes in and works, seven to three.
Yeah, no matter what, or we, the plant has to be manned between eight to three. But to get our eight hours, we're either coming in an hour early or an hour after, or seven thirty. It gives, gives an hour of flex.
Whoever comes in at eight would have to work all the time.
What you're saying, he can start at seven if he wants and leave at three unless he's a problem.
Unless there's an issue.
And I think it should be put in the letter, or signed by our chairman.
What's expected?
What's expected of him.
That'll stop it from further issues too, if somebody else say he doesn't stay and somebody else comes in. They'll know that if they wanna work from seven to three, if there's something going on, they're not leaving at three either.
It's kind of a mod, I know, like, my fiance's workplace, they do the same thing. They, they have to be there, I think, by nine o'clock. After nine o'clock, they're looking for you. I don't think we need, nine's a little late for us.
Right, but...
But it gives an hour of playtime.
I mean, he has issues that he has to leave by three, is what he, what the letter says.
Yeah, 'cause his, his girlfriend works...
So he has to...
At four o'clock, and so if he works till four, she has to take the kid to the in-laws or whatever, and there's a lot of shuffling around.
And I understand that, right.
So it, it makes, it makes like a little easier, I think.
Sounds like you should.
But basically, like, if, if the person's consistently coming in later than eight o'clock, you're technically tardy, because you're supposed to...
You're supposed to be here at seven.
Or you're, yeah, you're supposed to be by, by eight, yeah.
Well, I would say approve it, but have it written up like she said.
Yeah.
Have it written up with rules. With, with rules, yes.
With a stipulation that he understands that you will not always be able to leave at three o'clock.
Yes, but it was a motion, so I'll, I'll make the motion to change the, it's kind of a complicated thing to word. To change the hours to...
To adjust the hours from seven to three or eight to four?
Or eight to four.
I think you should put both of them, and shows that you can work to like seven to three or eight to four.
Right.
Or eight to four.
Yeah.
So that shows that somebody that comes in at eight needs to stay to four, instead of wanting to say, hey, I'll need to work eight to three. But if you go eight to four and seven to three, that shows that you gotta either work one or the other.
Yeah.
So, I'll make a motion to change the plant hours from eight to three.
No, seven to three, or eight to four.
Eight to four, seven to three.
Hello?
Hello?
Okay, before you make a motion, um... Well, if you want to be to seven to three, you can be willing to switch to the eight to four.
Well, that's kind of my, there might be, I guess that's where the flex time comes in. If I happen to be up early and I can make it in at seven, I, I guess I'm, I wouldn't, my opinion is, I wouldn't designate either person to either shift. Just make it that both of us are required to be there between eight and three. It's up to us that, okay, if we come in at seven, that person's staying. It's up to us that, okay, if we come in at seven, that person stays till three. If I come in at seven thirty, I stay till three thirty. If I come in at eight, I come in, I stay till four, yeah. But no matter what, we will be working, the plant will be manned.
Until three.
From eight o'clock to three. So I guess plant hours from eight to three with an hour flex before or after. Is what I, what I would like to see, I guess, as long as work is being done.
And you, you definitely need to be the one that oversees it all, too, you know?
Unless I'm the one being late or something, or the one sitting around doing it.
Then I will give you help.
There you go. There's a system that checks and balances.
We'll call Deb and have her come after you.
No, you don't have to do that.
You'll do that?
Alright, so.
You gonna run that, Deb?
I don't know, so, um, whatever you guys say, I'm still gonna say that it should be manned from that time, so.
And we can, we can feel it out, and if it's not working, we can always change it again, that's, I guess, I don't know. So I'll, I'll motion.
I don't know the reasoning behind, behind it, I mean, you know?
I guess just babysitter stuff for him.
Well, you know, I went to the hospital for all the time, and I had a seven to three shift, and I had to be there no matter what, so I know I didn't need, I have to say this year.
We could, uh. We could mandate seven to three, but I'd be shooting myself in the foot, 'cause I struggle. I'm doing good at eight, seven's tough.
Yeah, once we did seven to three, it'd be good, Patrick.
I'd be written up for tardiness.
I mean, you could do that.
Well, like I said, Patrick, it needs to be perceived by yourself, so if it, if he abuses it in any way, then just go right back to the way it was.
Patrick should have a list of what needs to be done in the morning, and if he comes in and finds that list not done.
Yeah.
Then he can, um.
Automatically over, you know what I mean?
Yep.
So.
Alright, so I'll try, uh, I'll make a motion to make required plant hours, uh, manned plant hours Monday to Friday from eight AM to three PM with an hour of flex time either after or before. Good?
Yeah, sounds good to me.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay, do you second it?
No, I can't.
I'll second.
I'll second.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all opposed?
Aye.
Alright.
Debbie, a policy?
Yep.
And I can make that motion due to it affecting a group of us, not just myself individually, not that it's a financial benefit anyway, but.
Okay. Okay, moving right along to new business, approval of our hospitalization plan.
Okay, I am gonna give, you can share this, this is not the lead, the building.
How many do we got?
Two, so we're gonna share, those two share. Okay, um.
No, I'll, I'll look at it.
Okay.
Our current plan, our current plan has, um, went up thirty percent. So the current plan, the cost is for the month, one thousand seventy dollars and ninety-four cents. So, um, I went out to do quotes for different ones, and, uh, Randy Gessi gave us one, and I called St. Mary's Insurance, it will be the same thing throughout everything because it's UPMC. UPMC, UPM, I'm recommending option four for, um, price of seven hundred and twenty-six fifty-nine, it's a hundred dollars less than what we're paying now. The employees have a deductible, fifteen hundred for single, three thousand for married. And Randy said he would talk to all the employees after we decide, because I have to sign the papers tonight, so we can send them in tomorrow.
And what was that number again, per month?
Seven hundred and twenty-six dollars and fifty-nine cents. That's for the one at option four for the PPL.
Patrick, can you repeat that, I don't need your.
Okay, um, we're looking over the, the healthcare, um, the one we have, current eighty is the one thousand seventy, the one recommended by Randy, right?
No, uh, he gave us easier options, and I recommended, and I talked to Randy, he says that's what most people have, is in the option four.
So they're basically eliminating options five, the one that we have, that's why the premium's so high, so, uh, Sharon's recommendation, I kind of looked at it, I'm okay with it, um, not that I, but, um, the one, option four for seven twenty-six fifty-nine, which is a hundred dollars cheaper.
About, pretty close to a hundred dollars cheaper.
And he said that's the one most places are falling back on anyway.
Can you repeat that, do it one more time?
Seven hundred and twenty-six dollars fifty-nine cents.
And that's for you and Justin?
Me and Justin. He doesn't have kids, well, they're not married and I'm married, so.
No, they just have two single. And that takes effect of July first, so we have to sign tonight. But I talked to St. Mary's Insurance, and she told me that the one at option five that we have now, they're trying to get rid of, 'cause they feel employees should pay, people should pay a deductible. So it might be a thousand dollars this year, it could go up fifty percent next year. So I couldn't see us paying a thousand dollars a month for employee insurance. So we're gonna, I recommend go with option four.
So we need a motion for that, right? Okay, I'd like to make a motion, we go with option four, what we just talked about, for our, uh, healthcare plan for, uh, twenty twenty for that.
Right.
Can I have a second for that?
I'll second.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I would say.
Um, I almost approached, um, I was given, I just went out on my own, like, since we're saving a hundred dollars, some of them, Justin has asked me if we could get dental, and, uh, I did get some information on dental, but I just got it tonight when I went in, I didn't have time to look at it. He said it could cost us thirty-six dollars a month, um, for each employee, and, uh, I would be interested in that also, but I need to look at it more to see if it's feasible for us, because I just got it tonight.
Many things in the healthcare, and we can talk about that if you have a date.
I just wanted to throw that out, if you still want me to pursue it, I will.
Let's see what we do, but, I mean, I'm not gonna say no longer, so, that's up to you guys.
And I'm gonna do that, want some more? Okay. Okay, employees' contract.
Okay, that one, I would say best to.
No.
Well, like we said, under correspondence, it was a record request. Um, we should discuss that in executive session, I think, um, and then come out, and I don't think there will be a decision made, but we won't act, we won't officially post immediately, we will, we will reconvene after we got there.
Okay, so we're gonna go on executive session right now?
I'll make a motion to enter executive session.
Okay, I'll set in that motion.
Gonna ask for in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, all opposed? Nobody does anymore, we're gonna take.
Yeah, 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 I'd say this one, but that's me.
See, um, see you, Joe.
Hey, it's still over, Sharon, I'll give you an update Monday after I've talked to, uh, Tracy. Just keep everybody in the.
Okay, bye.
Hey, you guys, have a good night.
Yeah, see you.
Yeah.
Executive session to discuss employee slash contract matters. Um, it sounds like the board wants to make a decision, um, after the discussion, so it's time that floor is open for that motion.
So we need, we need to make the motion to proceed of getting the money that was spent on the education, um, from Stacy Snyder's contract.
Basically enforcing the reimbursement clause.
Exactly. So we need.
The law compete and the defined trespass?
This would not be defined trespass. The two issues would be either the non-compete, uh, or the, the non-compete and or the reimbursement clause.
Okay.
Alright, and, uh.
So are we gonna do them separate, or are we gonna do them together?
I would say do it separate.
I would do it separate.
Okay, so we're gonna do the proceed to get money for the reimbursement clause first?
You could motion to go after one, you could motion not to go after one, you could motion to go after one, or table it, or whatever you have.
Okay, I'm asking, we have a motion from Jim. Um, to get, to proceed to get money from the reimbursement clause. And then we get a second from that, and then we go on for the other? Is that what we wanna do?
Yeah, we need a second on that?
I'll second.
Alright. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I would say due to my own contract.
Alrighty. And then the other was to define the trespass.
You know, the other one's the one that with the, the non-compete, non-compete.
Alright.
I wouldn't even go after that one.
No.
That's, that's out of hand there, I really do think. I think you better go with what we just okayed and see what happens.
Yeah, but we have to make a motion for both of them, I think, so.
Or if you, if you don't make a motion, you're essentially tabling it.
Yeah.
So you're just not.
So what, you just wanna table, you wanna make a, a motion to table it?
For you guys.
Okay, I'm making a motion to table the, uh.
Non-compete contract.
I don't know. Contract. Okay, um.
Okay, table on that, is do we talk to the lawyer, or are we just tabling it, Joe?
That would leave options open.
Yeah.
To talk to lawyer also?
Okay, so I made that motion, and I, can I have a second? Alright, all in favor?
Aye. If staying due to my contract, alright.
Yeah, I gotta ask, I wanna, um, since we opened the meeting back up, uh, we need to have a work session. I have some of it stuck, right, for, um, the pay schedule and holidays and stuff, and then, um, the work policy, we need to do some organization and job descriptions. We, I can't do that neither from Patrick, we need the board members to sit down at a work session and do that. I gave everybody a copy of the job descriptions and work, no work policy at the last meeting. I know Mr. Gusterson did not get that, so he will have to get, get that, 'cause we made some, we made some changes in throughout the year on the overtime and all that stuff.
And we discussed at the last meeting, putting my, the conduct policy center in my contract.
For the.
For everybody.
You know, for everyone.
Pretty much, like, there is no work policy, like, practical jobs, horse place.
Why don't you make just a little packet of that, and the rules and regulations of the authority too? I need to have the rules and regulations too, so. I don't wanna get, uh.
On the bylaws.
And we, yeah.
We didn't get there yet.
We're good, we'll get them, so.
Oh, we didn't get there.
No, we didn't get the fire calls, yes.
We didn't get the fire calls, yeah, okay. Rules and regulations and the bylaws and the job descriptions for you.
We'll get the info out, we can.
But everybody has everything that, and I think you should look at the job descriptions, and we should schedule a meeting, and we can have it up at the water authority on a Thursday night when Jimmy's here, and get this spread away once and for all, because we've been talking about this since I come here.
It has to be public, okay?
Yeah, we'll advertise it.
We'll get together and try to figure out.
So what's the, um, to me, you said June eighteenth?
Yeah, yeah.
Is June eighteenth okay with you, Debbie?
Yeah.
That is the conscious meeting.
Yeah, but we'll meet up at the city, at the water.
But is that gonna upset everybody that wants to attend the meetings?
They'll just have to choose.
We didn't have nobody here tonight.
Yeah, they made that choice, so. Alright.
When are you gonna make it?
June eighteen.
June eighteen.
At what time? We could make it earlier.
We can make it earlier.
Six o'clock.
You're, you're gonna be open?
Six.
That's it?
Oh, yeah, six, okay.
Yeah, I mean, the only time that I wouldn't be able to make at home is if it would get rained out one of the days and have to work at four o'clock.
At the water office?
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, I think you guys should all look at it, you know what's in there, and we'll give you what we have for the things. It won't take that long, if you guys all just get it.
We just played around with it today, just 'cause like I said, it's like copying and pasting what's in mine and there. But it makes the document like seventeen pages long. Do we wanna split it up, what order do we wanna?
See, you guys gotta tell us that, we can't do that.
Okay.
And I'll, you know, I'll give you what we have.
It is just a draft, and we're just conducting a draft, but.
So we'll give you copies within the next week?
Of what you've come up with so far?
What we, what we have so far, and the job descriptions we have, and then within a week, if you look at it, then we can get this done and get it off the agenda, and get the drug policy and everything else that we need to get done.
Get the ball, wonder.
So June eighteenth, I'm gonna have protests as a work session. Okay?
Okay.
'Cause if we wait till the end of the month, then we're gonna be struggling to get it for our, to get it approved.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Number three, fire calls.
Fire calls.
Said for to call off the fires.
Is this a one, is this, uh, for the workers that are fire company members? Second call, remaining power link, not leaving for every call, just second busy, and if there's a second call, so they need manpower, then they can leave the plant. We didn't have any like a statement from us before.
Alright.
Uh, for a structured fire only.
Alright.
Debbie, second call for manpower only plus structure fire?
Structure fire, they can go on the first call.
Okay.
Second call for manpower only, um, what's your thought on fire activity and stuff like that?
That's my thought.
Yep, okay.
So if they need somebody extra for accident, then there'd be a second call, yeah, on second call anyway, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, we need a motion for that.
Okay, I make a motion to, about the, uh, fire calls, the.
Structure fire.
Structure fire, yeah, structure fire, first call, anything else, the second call? I have a second.
I'll second.